Don't y'all love how I walk around the room for 15 minutes shaking hands and then hit the gavel like it's a sense of urgency? Uh, Madam Court, would you please call a roll?
Certainly. Good evening. Mr. Rickaman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Here.
Mr. Bedora?
Here.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
Here. Would you all join Aliyah and Jason Slack? They're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like an enthusiastic recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright. Thank you both. Alright. Reverend McDowell, would you give us a word?
Lord, in this place today we sense and feel the nearness of your touch in our lives. You've allowed us to move about today without hurt, harm, or danger befalling us. You've given to us the real meaning of Christmas. The Advent season is among us. And so, Lord, we simply ask that as it moves and as the spirit of Christmas moves in us and through us, we are able to sense the real and true meaning of what Christmas is all about. Touch us individually and collectively. Allow us to move with such, with such Advent hope that we are able to see hopelessness, hope in the midst of hopelessness. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Uh, is there a motion? Uh, I apologize. Uh, yes, there a motion to amend the council meeting agenda? Uh, we're gonna, uh, of course, take up items 34 and 35 immediately after consent agenda and prior to our presentations. Uh, we're gonna amend item 36, uh, uh, supporting and endorsing the Airport Boulevard Gateway Project. Uh, stated on our, on our, um, sheet here. We're gonna defer item 53, uh, as well. Uh, we're also gonna take up items, consider that the, uh, work session, adoption of the five aspirational goals, uh, presented by the Columbia Food Policy Committee during the work session. And is there one more item? Uh, we're, we're, we're also gonna defer action. Uh, should we just do that, um...
Fifty-one.
Uh, 51?
You can do that at that time, Mr. Mayor.
Do that, do that, that time? Okay. So, move adoption agenda. Is there, uh, move, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to previous question. And the clerk call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedora?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Uh, the, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege before we move forward and then also, uh, since we are not going to act on item 51 tonight, just out of respect of folks' time, I, I, I do want to probably take that up a little bit earlier too, uh, folks who are here, uh, for that. We're gonna deal with that with some, some temporary finality.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and we would just ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda as you outlined, Bill.
And we, of course, will have a public hearing starting at seven, at seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, seeing none, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, from items 10 through 28? Just a sec. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to previous question. Clerk call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedora?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Uh, I'm City Manager. Appreciate a point of, uh, personal privilege, uh, my colleagues. Uh, today, on December 17th, 2019, is the last day our, our colleague Mo Bedora will be serving on City Council with us. And at least in the meeting format, I don't think we're gonna have any special meetings over Christmas holidays, so this is the last one. And we wanted to take this, um, moment and this opportunity to say, uh, Mo, thank you, uh, for your service to the people of, of Columbia. It started before. Uh, you were a member of City Council and I doubt that your service will end after you leave City Council this year. So, uh, wanna take a moment to say, say thank you in, in our own way. Uh, now, Vanna White will come down the, uh... Uh, with, uh, uh, apparently, according to Mo and Mo only, he's quite an accomplished fisherman. So, he got a couple of, uh...
He has long stories, huh?
Alright. Mo.
Thank you, Mr. Bedora, for your service.
I can't tell if those are tears of sadness or tears of joy. He won't have to be here with us every other Tuesday night.
Mr. Mayor, the, the gift includes his name tag on the disc.
Yes, take it.
Mr. Macken?
Alright.
May I take a moment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Say Jack.
Take a moment.
Alright. No, thank you.
I, uh, in 2012, this was, um, an exciting time when I was elected and chosen by the public, uh, or the citizens of District 3 in the city of Columbia. Um, I have met thousands of y'all. I've listened to a lot of stories. I am so humbled to serve and to be part of this city and part of this community. I am, uh, also humbled that I brought in two beautiful boys into this city and they call home. And, uh, nothing I can say tonight reflects how I feel about the Districts 3 and the city of Columbia and the citizen who welcomed me and, um, thought of me every day, uh, during the hard times and the good times. Uh, there were a lot of people that reached out to me and they still do, and for that, I appreciate it. Um, and I will continue to support the city and help everybody that I can from now on till the day I die. 'Cause, um, once you get the bug in your system as a public servant, I don't think you can get that out of your system. Uh, that being said, I am more than honored to have these colleagues among me every single week, every single day. Uh, good days and bad days. We've had some rough discussions and some good discussions and some, um, a lot of, a lot of passion of what we do. Uh, for that, I will thank you. Thank you, Reverend.
Sam, Mayor D'Amica, Howard and Daniel. Y'all are more than a brother and a sister to me. Um, and that being said, whether you like it or not, I'm gonna call you my new family. Uh, fighting the tears and fighting the excitement, I just really, really wanna say how honored I am to be part of this council. How honored I am to be a citizen of Columbia and, uh, I am honored, honored to have served you. And for that, uh, God bless you and I hope you all have a really Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Um, and for all your family and your friends, I wish you well. Thank you all for having me.
Now, even when you agree and, and when you disagree, I think many of you realize it takes a, a serious commitment to serve and serve your colleagues and your fellow citizens and to think of the thousands of man-hours that Mo's devoted, uh, to the people of Columbia. Um, I wish you the best, brother. Godspeed. Alright? Godspeed. Alright, the, um...
That was nice, y'all. Thank you.
The, uh, we're gonna take up items 34 and 35. A real privilege tonight. I think I get to go first and then Mr. McDowell's gonna, uh, uh, follow me. Uh, item 34, have resolution?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Moving into a period of resolutions, item 34, resolution number R-2019-109, honoring naming of the 2,400 and 2,500 blocks of Hampton Street between Oak Street and Millwood Avenue, Doris W. Hildebrandt Way.
It's been a great deal of talk. Um, some of you have been involved in the wonderful City of Women Initiative. Uh, Ms. Devine has been serving as one of the leaders of, uh, in which we're recognizing, uh, the fact that all across this city, uh, we have the names of men from the Revolutionary War and men from the Civil War and, and men who've helped influence the, the arc of the history of, of this great city since 1786. But very few of our streets, um, uh, actually none downtown. There's Lady Street named after, um, um, Martha Washington in honor of her. Uh, we've done some honorary street renaming's, but we, we've, we've, we've hit a stride now in which we're finally, I think, articulating the most powerful words in the English language. And those are just thank you. Thank you to the incredible people, particularly the women. And, and I would say this is of particular, uh, importance to us because we recognize the incredible role that, that women of color, um, strong, uh, African-American women like the woman who, who, who raised me uh, and their role in helping shape this city and their very few decisions that were made in Columbia over the last several decades that, that Doris Hildebrandt didn't influence. I tease a few people in this room. Uh, when, y'all know the difference between being, between volunteering to do something and being voluntold to do something? When, when Ms. Hildebrandt called you, 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 she was nice, she was sweet, uh, uh, and, and, and a daughter knows it. Um, but it was clear that, that she was, uh, fully invested in her community, acting, uh, on behalf of her community and advocating, uh, um, um, every day, all the time, and always with a spirit of love and, and compassion. And to take this opportunity as a council and to recognize her incredible contributions. And, um, she's gone in the glory, uh, but she's still here with us and for, um, for years to come. Uh, even, even those who, who may not have, uh, had the opportunity to meet her will know that she... Even those who may not have had the opportunity to meet her will know that she had an imprint, impact on the incredible Waverly neighborhood. So, uh, would you, I move that we move forward with item thirty-five? Is there a second? So move. All right. Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to previous question. Clerk call roll.
That'd be item thirty-four.
Forty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thank you. Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you. You can say something if you like, please.
She is truly missed. I think her community misses her, and I think a lot of you guys miss her too. I've had, she's had a lot of you guys in her house. She's fed a lot of you. And like the mayor says, she volunteers you to do stuff. But she does it with the kindness and goodness of her heart. I do wanna say my brother said he's sorry he cannot be here tonight. His boys play basketball, and that is where he is right now. We greatly appreciate y'all recognizing our mother.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you so much.
In retrospect, I should've had Mayor Kobo come over here and spin some tales about your mom. I'm sure, I'm sure he's got, he's got a tale or two to tell about being voluntold, for sure. Good seeing you, Mr. Mayor. Reverend McDowell? I'm sorry, ma'am, city manager?
Yes, sir. Item thirty-five, resolution number R-two thousand nineteen one one zero, approving the honorary naming of the twenty-three hundred block of Pendleton Street between Oak Street and Height Street, Donella B. Wilson Way.
Nineteen oh nine. Ms. Donella B. Wilson. Born. Her life so rich. So much into her community. When she transitioned, she was one hundred and six. One hundred and eight.
Eight.
What'd you say? Oh.
Eight.
That's going to, that's going to. We are honored that in nineteen thirty-three, with all of the many things she endeavored to do, Ms. Donella earned her teaching, her teaching credentials from Allen University. Over a span of years and years, she's excelled over her lifetime. She was recipient of many honors, awards and citations. Her many associations include Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, lifetime membership in the NAACP, Household of Roof Women's Home Aid Society, the South Carolina and the Richland County Retired Teachers Association, Allen University alumnus. Many things, but the thing that was so, that impressed me more than anything was her willingness, when it was time to vote, she would vote. And she voted up until the time she died. That's a responsibility that all of us ought to share in. And isn't it a legacy to know that this warrior, this servant of God, remained with a zeal and with a vitality? So tonight, we honor her. We give all praises to her. We tonight celebrate the honorary naming, Donella B. Wilson Way.
And that was a motion. I second that motion.
Second.
All right. As, uh, move the previous question.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
So many of you who've met with me downstairs in the mayor's office know that right over my left shoulder, I have a picture of Mrs. Wilson and Reverend Wilson along with a number of our citizens lining up in that historic vote to vote in that, um, in nineteen forty-seven, Bobby? Forty-eight? The lawsuit was forty-seven. The vote was forty-eight, after the Elmore versus Wright's decision. I, um, I plan to have a rotating exhibit of different types of photographs in the office about four or five years ago. I asked Doc Donaldson if I could borrow them. I never gave him back to him. Because it represents so much to me and to so many of us about, about who we are, about who gave us the opportunities to even suggest we wanna serve the people of this community. Ms. Bivens, maybe unbeknownst to her siblings, I don't know, is kind enough to bless us with some of Reverend Wilson's cufflinks. And I will tell you, and Doc Donaldson, I got two more tonight, just so you know. He's wearing a pen. There's a friendly competition going on among some of us. These wonderful gifts, and actually, the cap are red too, just so y'all know, Juan, you could appreciate this. No, just, um, I've worn these cufflinks into meetings with Attorney General Sessions when he was there, into meetings with President Trump and others, because I will tell you, they give me simple powers, y'all. You go into these meetings and you, and it helps you understand not just who you are, but whose you are. And there's just something in the air when so many of you who gave so much and continue to give to make sure that we understand not only the story of the African seed and the American sun, but just the story of America and what we aspire to be. It's, um, it's a powerful story. And just taking a little bit of time tonight, and we are not going to hold all of you here hostage the rest of the meeting. So if y'all got to go, I was instructed, voluntold by somebody earlier this week. We can, and keep us here all night. I said, no, we're gonna keep you here all night, but we did wanna make sure we took the time to do justice to these two great women. And by extension, all of you who continue to serve this community, thank y'all and God bless you. And we won't mind if it looks like an exodus right now for those of you who have to get home and do other things. God bless y'all, and thank y'all so much for being here. Mr. McDowell, he's, he's, okay.
They took the links.
Oh, boy. Don't add, don't add anyone else now, Ms. Minnie. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we...
Would you like to wrap up your resolutions, Mr. Mayor? Or would you like to move back to presentations or item fifty-one? I'll be quick.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll go into presentations. And, yeah, we're going to presentations.
Thirty-six, then presentations?
Yeah.
Item thirty-six, resolution number R-two thousand nineteen one zero six, supporting and endorsing the Airport Boulevard Gateway beautification project with the amendment of the fifth whereas clause to include eight gateways instead of nine.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to previous question. Clerk call roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. For those of you who may not be aware of this, this is an exciting initiative. All the local governments and the business community working together to enhance gateways into the Midlands across jurisdictional lines. It's gonna be an incredible effort that the public will certainly enjoy.
Yes, sir.
Aye. I wouldn't shift up, I wouldn't shift up over to the nuts.
Okay. Presentations, item twenty-nine, recognition of Mr. Frank J. Slack as the December Employee of the Month. Mr. Joey Jaco, our Director of Utilities. Mr. Joseph Harley, Assistant Wastewater Maintenance Superintendent. And Mr. Martin Golston, Wastewater Collection System Operator Supervisor, and so on and so on, are here to bring recognition to Frank.
I've got the pleasure of introducing our December Employee of the Month, Mr. Frank Slack. Frank is an employee of our Wastewater Maintenance Group. He's an example of an employee that's dedicated to what he does. He cares about what he does, and he believes in providing quality service to our customers. So, I think it's a result of the group he works with. I'm hoping these guys are gonna come up here and stand behind me, 'cause they're all, they're all mentors in the group. But I'm gonna let Mr. Martin Golston, the supervisor, introduce him. But I just, it's my pleasure to be able to work with these people, 'cause they're really, they're a really great group, great group of people.
All right. Golston?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Wilson, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Frank Slack. Will you stand up, please, sir? Mr. Frank Slack has served the City of Columbia Sewer Division since December the nineteenth, two thousand five, in the Wastewater Management Division. In that time, Frank has risen to the position of Wastewater Collection System Operator A, and often served as a crew lead member for the Wastewater Management Division throughout, with the primary yard restoration crew. His strong work ethic was proven through his success of obtaining a Wastewater Collections Operator A license. Frank serves as the face of the City of Columbia Wastewater during his response to address his yard restorations and customer concerns. Frank's calm demeanor allows him to expertly work with customers to resolve their immediate concerns, but also to turn them, their negative experience into a positive interaction. His professional appearance, positive attitude and dedication to customer service contribute greatly to his success. Frank consistently performs above and beyond the call of duty on a daily basis throughout mentoring his peers, encouraging others in ensuring job completion. He continually, continuously represents the City of Columbia Wastewater Management through his tireless efforts to ensure the customer is happy and satisfied. Frank's enthusiasm and willingness to serve on yard restoration is demonstrated with his professional interaction with colleagues and managers. Frank is always willing to take on assignments and be at the front line of Wastewater Management Division response. His commitment to Wastewater Management is valid, valid through his role on the Division Safety Committee, on-call rotation, and as well serving as on the Waste Management, Wastewater Management Stoppage Crews and CCTV crews, and now the Yard Restorations Crew. Mr. Frank Slack, our December Employee of the Month.
Frank, we are so proud of you. You all, with the work that you do, you know that I'm always worried about you. I'm always encouraging you all to be safe. For you to be one of our ambassadors and doing that means a lot for you personally, but also for your peers. Thank you for all you do. And a little birdie told me that your sister's in the room is Ms. Michelle Johnson, which if I'd know her well, who used to be a long time employee in the city, she probably bosses you like she's your mama. Yeah, so I understand even more so your genes and all the good work ethic that you have. So, thank you. This is a small token. Enjoy it at Christmas time.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
All right, Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty, Certificates of Appreciation, Mr. Keith Tolan, The Red Bowtie Group, LLC, an artist.
Hey, Keith. Yes, my name is Keith Tolan. I stand here as a representative of a group of artists who had the pleasure of exhibiting for the past three months downstairs in the lobby. And we would encourage you to take a peek at their work. There are five artists, but in being brief, as I was instructed to do, I wanted to use this time to show our thanks and appreciation first to Ms. Teresa Wilson, our city manager, for providing us this opportunity to showcase our work. And it may seem like I'm rushing, but I did want to save a moment, because in my opinion, so much of this would not have happened if it wasn't for one individual. And there is just so much I could say about this individual, but since you have a lot of business to take care of, I'm just gonna say one thing, and it's to Ms. Doris Harris.
One, yes.
We could not have done anything without her. I believe you told me her name is Ms. Doris M. Harris. And if that's the case, I know that M. has to represent Marvelous, because she's done an awesome job for us, and we really, really, really thank you, and I'm proud to be the one to present this certificate to you.
It's awesome when the people who really deserve it get the credit. Hey, Keith, thank you so much. Thank you, you beautified. If you haven't spent some time in the lobby, I would encourage you to go downstairs and see whether it's been a multi-year experiment, I think at its peak right now. Everything's there except for the prices, brother. We need to know what things cost, so we need to know what things cost, but you've done an amazing job down there, amazing job.
Thank you. And I would like to just say briefly that in January, I think really, the show that will follow our exhibition is going to be one that you really won't want to miss. You know, you highlighted earlier some of the accomplishments of women here in Columbia. The show that's coming up in January is the Supper Table, and for any of you that are not familiar with it, I encourage you to stop back in during the month of January and see this unbelievable exhibition. This was sponsored, I believe, by the Jasper Magazine. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Item 31, The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for fiscal year ended in June 30, 2018. Mr. Juan Sims, Government Finance Officers Association of South Carolina, the GFOASC President. And Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Sims comes forward, I want to thank him for taking his time to be here to share this with our council. It goes without saying from me personally, that I'm very proud of this staff and everything that you do, every day.
Appreciate it. The Mayor, Members of the Council, staff, and other attendees, it's my honor and pleasure to be here. Once again, my name is Juan Sims. I am the President of the GFOA Association. A little background information, the Government Finance Officers Association is a national organization. This past May, at our national conference, I had the opportunity to interact with counterparts from Norway, Sweden, South America, the Netherlands, Jordan, and Mexico. Now onto the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. The GFOA established a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving this goal. The goal of the program is not to assess the financial health of participating governments, but rather to ensure the users of their financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the City of Columbia for the year ending June 2018.
Hi, I'm here accepting this on behalf of the Finance Department and Jan Alonso, who cannot be with us this evening. But there was a lot of hard work that went into this. I don't know, you all know Jan. It is not okay to do just enough. We always have to go above and beyond to be excellent.
We know.
So it is an expectation that we continue to get this despite the many challenges that we had during the fiscal year 18 audit. And in those challenges, we had people that really stepped up, and so I'd like to especially thank Danielle Hatton, who was our parking accountant, and she really stepped up in the absence of others who passed during the time. So it was a really amazing experience to get to see that as my first year with the city, how great everybody comes together and really supports each other. So thank you very much. Thank you very much to Jessica, because she also carried a large flame in this, so thank you so much.
All right.
This is the sixth year in a row, y'all, sixth year in a row.
That's the standard, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lindler?
All right, we have now the National Association of Minority Contractors, 2019 8A Contract Readiness Program. Ms. Melissa Lindler, Office of Business Opportunities Director.
Good evening. How's everyone doing tonight?
Hey, Missy.
We do a lot in the Office's of Business Opportunities, as you well know, but everything that we do, we do in partnership, both internally with other departments, but also we rely a lot on our external partners. So if I could, please ask Angela Brewer to come up with us. Please come up here with me. Alan Brown, South Carolina Small Business Administration, sorry, Angela Brewer, Small Business Administration. Alan Brown, South Carolina Small Business Development Center. Ron Taylor, President of the National Association of Minority Contractors. Dana Higgins, Director of Engineering. Gary here? He's not here. Gary, Department of Engineering? Sorry. Port 4th, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there are a lot of Garry's in engineering, I'm sorry. And Sandra Wright, can you please come forward? So everything that we do, again, we do in collaboration, but we not only do it with our external partners, but we do it in partnership with everyone that you see behind me and some others that are not here. So the National Association of Minority Contractors training was a four-week course that we did in September, and also one, I'm sorry, one more person. Foresight Communications. Courtney Young. So these are just some pictures that we had from the training, us doing what we do, partnering. But when we actually signed the Small Business Administration, remember in with understanding earlier this year, one of the things that we said that we would do would be to partner with Small Business Administration, do more work with them to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our small business community, but we also said that we would try to make sure that we increase the number of 8A programs throughout the state. So we partnered with NAMAC. We found out that they were doing this training. It was actually the brainchild of Mr. Willie Farmer. Is he here? Mr. Farmer is an 8A participant, and he's actually there to my right, up there. He's teaching, I think, or he's telling someone what to do. What to do, that's what he was doing. But he thought, because he is an 8A participant, how better to prepare them, to help them understand what's required, the certifications that you need, how do you maneuver that process? How do you prepare to make sure that you're ready for that program? So we were able to do that program. We had 17 participants and council members there in front of you, and I'm just gonna call their names. They've already received their certificates, and after I'm finished, if they can just join us. Ms. Manny Anderson, Plumb Time Plumbing and Drain Services, LLC. Willa Above Brogdon, Global Construction and Development, LLC. Shannon Burgess, Transformation Landscape and Design. Willie Farmer, Farmer Construction. K.V. Philammon, Philammon Solutions. Sarah Gomez, LG Utility Construction. Kelvin Horn, Transformation Landscape and Design. Candace Jacobs, Clean Freaks Cleaning Service, LLC. Jeremy Jenkins, Jenkins Interior, LLC. Evans Khan Energy Transport. Bill McGee. SciTech LLC. Ron Taylor, Taylor Brothers. Ronald Washington, People's Choice Plumbing, LLC. Carlos White, Keemont Masonry, LLC. Tetrina White, Keemont Masonry, LLC. C.J. Willis, Wire Monkey AV. Ebony Young, Shifting Solutions Consulting Firm, LLC. And Courtney Young, Foresight Communications. If y'all could please join me for a picture. Thank you.
Where's the other page?
They can see you back there.
No, we can't.
See us back here.
Okay, I might be shit.
We're good. It ain't about us. What's up, Gary?
I can see me, I can see the camera. You can't see us, Danielle?
Yeah, we're good. It's about them.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your entrepreneurial spirit, for creating jobs, investing in this community.
At this time, Ms. Lindler and our Director of Engineering, Ms. Dana Higgins, will present the City of Columbia Waterline Contractors Training Series.
So this training was something that we planned, it was planned, starting, I want to say, earlier in the year. Ms. Diane Sumter actually thought, you know, this is one way that we can help create that pipeline of minority business owners that can participate in our compliance programs, MPP, the Mentor Protege Program, or our Columbia Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. So we partnered with Columbia Water, Ms. Dana Higgins, and Clint Shealy, and all of them, as usual, and also our Director of Procurement, she's over there, she doesn't want to get back up, Sandra Wright, I always call on them, because I love partnering, as y'all can tell, because we can't do it alone. But not only were they partners, they were actually presenters. So with the Waterline Contractors Training Series, this was actually a series of six weeks, and we held it in one of our Columbia-owned facilities here, the print building, all except for one class. That one class that we did not have it was the one that we did on-site. We actually did a site visit, so people could actually see what it takes to do actual waterline work. And we did that out in Earlmo, one of our projects. And the first week, we actually talked about reviewing plans and specifications, performing site visits, preparing a quote and bid, managing the pre-construction phase, managing the construction phase, and the last week, we actually did conducting contract closeout. All sessions were very well attended. You have the actual list in front of you, I'm sorry, but all the sessions were very well attended. Procurement actually talked about the process of doing contracts through the City of Columbia. We worked with Engineering to look at the actual site plans for the site visit that we did. They helped us choose the actual plan, and it was a collaborative partnership between the Office of Business Opportunities and Columbia Water to actually provide this training. Just showing you some more pictures, and that's actually the site visit there, some of our program participants. I'll leave it there. Dana, did you want to say anything before?
Sure. Like Melissa said, we are very excited to be partnering with them on this, because we are always looking to expand and diversify our contractor pool. We spend a lot of money in Columbia Water, so this has been a great opportunity, because we're reaching people who maybe haven't had the skill set to be able to bid on our projects, but now they're coming out of this training and they're really set up to be able to compete. So we're very excited.
And again, this was also in partnership with SBA as part of our MOA that we have with them. So thank you, Angela, for all that you do with us, the City of Columbia. Now, I just want to recognize them who actually participated in our program, and some of our presenters. Donald Adams, Domino Plumbing. Cedric Barnes, CMB Services Incorporated. Micah Barnes, CMB Services Incorporated. Cesar Barrera, Southeast Drywall, LLC. Tara Bell, TSB Hauling, LLC. Lynn Blizzard, Kershaw Builders, Incorporated. Ulysses Chavez, Moda Enterprises, LLC. Suzanne Clary, Hybert Engineering, Incorporated. Rawl Divala, Southeast Drywall, LLC. Chad Easter, The Wooten Company. Diane Fleishman, the DSA Group. Juan Gomez Lopez, LG Utility Construction. Listen to Louis Alice, LLE Construction Group, LLC. Flores Ogura, FNO Construction and Associates. William Peterson, Peterson Lawn Maintenance. Jennifer Powers, JD Powers, LLC. Sarah Zoloa, Gomez, LG Utility Construction. So those were our actual participants, and our presenters that we had throughout the six-week period. Ernest Cromody III, Attorney at Law, Cromody Law Firm. Rosalyn Graham, Researcher at MBD Business Center. Alex McCoon, PE, Project Manager for DSA Incorporated. Juliette Nelly, Program Compliance Administrator, Office of Business Opportunities. Wendy Pageant, National Safety Counsel. Gary Porfite, Construction Procurement Manager, City of Columbia. Camille Shaw, Project Director, MBDA Business Center. Antonio Schuler, Engineering Associate, DSA Incorporated. Brad Stutz, Owner, Stutz &amp; Williams, LLC. Anthony Washington, Senior Estimator, DSA Incorporated. Joey Williams, Owner, Stutz &amp; Williams, LLC. Cliff Wilson, President and CEO, The Center Group. Aisha Woodard, Accountant, DSA Incorporated. Sandra Wright, Director, Purchasing Agent, City of Columbia. Derek Wrigley, Adams 80 and Associates. So if you all could all join me in congratulating them for not only completing the course, but also our presenters for participating, and all of our partners for always being such great fun. Presenters and participants, can you please come forward? We have a small reception for council and our participants downstairs at the conclusion of council. Thank you. And it was a collaborative partnership between the Office of Business Opportunities and Columbia Water to actually provide this training. Just showing you some more pictures. And that's actually the site visit there, some of our program participants. I'll leave it there. Dana, did you want to say anything before?
Sure. Like Melissa said, we are very excited to be partnering with them on this, because we are always looking to expand and diversify our contractor pool. We spend a lot of money in Columbia Water, so this has been a great opportunity, because we're reaching people who maybe haven't had the skill set to be able to bid on our projects. But now they're coming out of this training and they're really set up to be able to compete. So we're very excited.
And again, this was also in partnership with SBA as part of our MOA that we have with them. So thank you, Angela, for all that you do with us, the City of Columbia. Now, I just want to recognize them who actually participated in our program, and some of our presenters. Donald Adams, Domino Plumbing. Cedric Barnes, CMB Services Incorporated. Micah Barnes, CMB Services Incorporated. Cesar Barrera, Southeast Drywall LLC. Tara Bell, TSB Hauling LLC. Lynn Blizzard, Kershaw Builders Incorporated. Ulysses Chavez, Moda Enterprises LLC. Suzanne Clary, Hybert Engineering Incorporated. Rawl D'Avola, Southeast Drywall LLC. Chad Easter, The Wooten Company. Diane Fleishman, the DSA Group. Juan Gomez Lopez, LG Utility Construction. Listen to Louis Alice, LLE Construction Group LLC. Flores Ogura, FNO Construction and Associates. William Peterson, Peterson Lawn Maintenance. Jennifer Powers, JD Powers LLC. Sarah Zoloa Gomez, LG Utility Construction. So those were our actual participants. And our presenters that we had throughout the six-week period. Ernest Cromady III, Attorney at Law, Cromady Law Firm. Rosalyn Graham, Researcher at MBD Business Center. Alex McCoon, PE, Project Manager for DSA Incorporated. Juliette Nelly, Program Compliance Administrator, Office of Business Opportunities. Wendy Pageant, National Safety Counsel. Gary Porfite, Construction Procurement Manager, City of Columbia. Camille Shaw, Project Director, MBDA Business Center. Antonio Schuler, Engineering Associate, DSA Incorporated. Brad Stutz, Owner, Stutz &amp; Williams LLC. Anthony Washington, Senior Estimator, DSA Incorporated. Joey Williams, Owner, Stutz &amp; Williams LLC. Cliff Wilson, President and CEO, The Center Group. Aisha Woodard, Accountant, DSA Incorporated. Sandra Wright, Director Purchasing Agent, City of Columbia. Derek Wrigley, Adams 80 and Associates. So if you all could all join me in congratulating them for not only completing the course, but also our presenters for participating, and all of our partners for always being such great fun. Presenters and participants, can you please come forward? We have a small reception for council and our participants downstairs at the conclusion of council.
Diane.
Oh, man, I got all my steps in already.
Tell Dion I said.
All right, so, all right. So.
She's golden.
Very quickly, I want to take up item thirty-one, and then we're gonna go straight into the public hearing. Fifty-one, excuse me. No number, yes, ma'am, please.
Item fifty-one, under our ordinance's second reading, I'll read it into the record, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, we're gonna entertain a motion to defer this into the new year, to allow for further conversations around the business license ordinance. Many of you may know, we've already indicated our intent to adopt the Model Business License Ordinance, as promoted and supported by the Municipal Association. A lot of these issues will be addressed as we touch on that. But there's a great sense among council, a majority, a supermajority of council, that this is something that needs to be addressed as we continue to be a city that's structured very differently than probably any other city in the country. A significant number of, not only government institutions, but nonprofit institutions, all of which contribute to our economic life here, but a number of institutions that do the same work, but are not treated equally under our policies of fees and taxes, and trying to pursue equity, but at the same time, recognize our responsibility as public officials and public servants to make sure that we're able to communicate our efforts to achieve parity and equity in a way that everyone understands it, and one that's consistent with the way that we want to do business. The reason that Mr. Palin and his team, and Ms. Wilson and others have received the Government Finance Officers Association of Excellence Award for the last six years in a row, is because we try to do things right, not always fast, but right. And there's a great sense among our council colleagues that we spend a little more time making sure we communicate exactly the intent and purpose behind this ordinance, and encourage more dialogue with the business community and with our nonprofit organizations to try and reach some consensus before we act again. It is the intent of council for this to come back up, but hopefully in the interim, that there's some opportunity to foster a much more aggressive and illuminating discussion. So with that explanation, will entertain a motion for deferral?
So moved.
So moved.
Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Court Callroll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we are past our seven o'clock hour, Mr. Mayor, in which we can open the public hearing.
Please.
The first reading for zoning planning matters.
Which ones are mine?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to go in?
Yeah, which ones? Is this one? Yeah, I know I'm stepping out on six matters.
It should be the final items in the zoning public hearing now would be.
Just make sure you signal me. This is a matter of practice, y'all. I don't vote on items regarding Wood Creek Farms neighborhood I live in. There's no financial interest, but just as a matter of, I think, good government, I don't vote on zoning issues related to my neighborhood. So when those items come up, I will vacate the room and go get me a cup of coffee, because I need coffee right now. So.
Items forty-seven through fifty, Mr. Mayor.
All right, fantastic. Ms. Hampton?
All right, good evening. We begin your zoning public hearing this evening with a future land use map confirmation amendment for 121-141 Sparkleberry Crossing Road, a request to affirm the land use classification of regional activity corridor.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry, public hearing. You can give the explanation. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Court Callroll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Similarly, with this annexed land, we are looking for a zoning map amendment confirmation for 121 and 141 Sparkleberry Crossing. Confirm the zoning of C3.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Move the previous question. Court Callroll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
And for the future ones, I will tell you that you can combine them. These are confirming the map, the land use map, and the zoning map. That is the same for thirty-nine and forty. This would be for forty-six twenty-four, forty-six twenty-eight, and forty-eight thirty, Divine Street. It's a request to confirm the land use classification of Urban Core Community Activity Center and the zoning of C3 flood protective area.
All right, I know there's some citizens who are here to speak in favor of and against this item, so I allow the proponent, I'm not sure if the advocate cares to speak first, or someone on behalf of the advocate, Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Robert Fuller. I'm here this evening in representation of the folks who have annexed the property or seeking annexation of a portion of property at the intersection of Garnas Ferry Road and Gills Creek. The property is adjacent to and has been closely aligned with the shopping center, the Bylow Shopping Center at the intersection of Jackson Boulevard and Garnas Ferry Road. The property has been identified most clearly in the past years as the old Title Max property. The property was a doughnut hole in the city that was a part of the county. It has now come in. The purpose of this has been for the acquisition to become a part, an active part of the shopping center movement in that area. The plan is to build an automated car wash center there. We have already gone to border zoning appeals and gotten approval for a special exception, making a full presentation of the type of operation it would be sensitive to Gills Creek and the area, the engineering that handles the water that comes out of the wash and joins the water that comes down from nature, as we've had the last couple of days, a combination of filtering systems for any that goes back into the creek, and the balance of the process water goes into the sewer system of the City of Columbia. This is simply a matter, we think, of annexation in the natural order and sequence of events. It was fully vetted in the border zoning appeals as to the operational aspects. It is a property that easily handles the accommodation of traffic at that intersection. It's directly at a light on Garnas Ferry Road, Croson Road. There are no direct accesses off of the property, the operating property, onto Garnas Ferry Road. It's absorbed into the center site. The owner of the center has, of course, agreed to all of this, and the owner of the property as well wants to see something done with that property completely fallow after the flood initially wrecked the property at the intersection. We think it is simply a matter of course. It has already been reviewed by the city processes, and we asking for your confirmation now of the permanent zoning and annexation of this property into the City of Columbia as a productive, ongoing, permanent business enterprise.
Thank you, counselor. Other citizens who are here to speak in favor of or against this item, this is a public hearing, and the microphone is yours. I do not have a specific sheet of anyone, so please introduce yourself as you come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Valerie Marshall, and I'm representing the Gills Creek Watershed Association tonight. I'm asking council to vote no tonight on C3 designation for this property on Divine Street. I understand the conundrum you are in, but I challenge you to consider the opportunity you have here. This is an unusual parcel of land. As you all know, it is the former location of the Title Max building that was destroyed in the flood of two thousand fifteen. Here's some additional pertinent history for this parcel. In the spring of two thousand fourteen, building on the city's land use plan, city council adopted a commercial node plan for the Divine Street corridor where this parcel lies. The plan cost seventy-five thousand dollars and focused on improving character of place and walkability. This would happen with restoration of the parcels immediately surrounding Gills Creek, creating a linear park that would attract people to work, live, and play and shop in this commercial node. It would protect a precious bit of floodplain while also becoming an economic engine. Pre-flood, this property was entirely in the FEMA designated floodway, and appropriately so, it seems. For some bizarre reason, after the flood, FEMA redrew the flood maps and reduced the area of floodway on this property, technically opening up the remaining floodplain portion of this property to development. Also, after the flood, the county offered a buyout for this property through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program. The owner at the time refused. He refused the buyout. In the summer of two thousand seventeen, a prospective buyer of the properties asked to speak to Gills Creek Watershed Association. We met with him and tried to dissuade him from buying the property because of its risks. Nevertheless, he purchased the property on speculation for two hundred thousand dollars. He is the property owner today. From two thousand seventeen to nineteen, the property sat again. But today, we have before us the final phases of a fast-tracked annexation and C3 zoning with a proposal to build a car wash. How has this happened? The city has struggled to be in compliance with state and federal stormwater regulations, and it has spent untold amounts of money and staff resources on cleaning up Gills Creek and developing plans that recommend returning this area along the creek to green space. Why is the city rewarding a speculative investment that is counter to all of these plans? Please think hard about the options for this piece of property and take time to come up with a better solution. Please vote no tonight on C3 zoning. Thank you.
All right. I can't tell if Mr. Matthew Morcom wants to speak on this item or not. Okay, all right, okay. We have Madeline Fletcher.
I'm Dr. Madeline Fletcher, and I'm here to speak as immediate past president for the Gills Creek Watershed Association. I start by voicing my strong support for the value of open space, particularly where it helps to control and reduce the harm caused by contaminated or excessive stormwater runoff. The plans for a greenway along the Gills Creek, including a path through the old Title Max property, would provide such open space. And here or there is an opportunity to build a valuable greenway without infringing on existing development. One of the arguments being made for approving the C3 zoning that we're discussing here is the owners and developers' agreement to accommodate the penny-funded greenway in this area. But are such accommodations realistic or even possible? Let's look at the new trail standards that just two weeks ago this council approved. These will apply to any greenway that goes through this property, and some of these standards appear to be inconsistent with the proposed development on this property. For example, do you and the property owners realize that a greenway will be required to be twelve to fourteen feet wide at this location, and that this will require a twenty-foot wide right-of-way? Furthermore, the current proposal confines the greenway to the narrow strip of land between the car wash and the stream. To what extent does that require destroying the very limited existing vegetative buffer? And when we add to this the extensive paving of open land required by the car wash development itself, would there still be room for developers to implement their proposed stormwater management strategies? We also have to ask now, what happens when the pedestrians and cyclists using the greenway reach the intersection of the car wash, service road, and Divine Street? How will that already risky intersection safely accommodate these vulnerable users? To what extent will putting a car wash at this site increase the complications of vehicle traffic? There are other requirements, including those in the trail standards, that could be impossible to meet with unwise development on this parcel, such as those related to robust expensive trail construction and floodways, protection of grand trees, and turning radius requirements for service vehicles. They too require a close look. But my basic point is this: We have the opportunity now to consider use of this property for protection of the Gills Creek and its surrounding community from the degrading or dangerous impacts of runoff pollution and damaging floods. I urge you to look hard now at the consequences of the decision you are making tonight. And if we don't sufficiently understand these consequences now, take the time to get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. All right. Trish, I can't read your penmanship.
You are not the first, mercy. My father, who was a very smart man, raised us to believe that bad penmanship and bad spelling were signs of great intelligence. I cultivated both, unfortunately. And I offer that to all you guys who have bad penmanship.
I have to tell my boy that.
Yeah, well, it may stick. She may find herself as an adult having to explain herself. I'm sorry. I am Trish German, and I am the newly elected president of the Gills Creek Watershed Association. Like others from the Gills Creek Watershed Association, I appreciate the opportunity to express our views tonight, and like Dr. Fletcher and Ms. Marshall before me, I've got concerns. I want to focus on flooding and floodplains. The car wash proposal came to our attention, and we certainly want to appreciate Mr. Bedura and the developers for coming and talking to us about what they were planning to do well in advance. That was a nice gesture, and we appreciated it. But that proposal came at about the same time that the statewide Governor's Floodway Commission was coming out with its draft recommendations. And the juxtaposition of the statewide consideration of what do we as a state do to deal with what we anticipate to be much greater levels of flooding with what was happening at the local level, where we seem to be sort of forgetting what happened in two thousand fifteen and proceeding with business as usual, it was a little unsettling. The area where Divine Street crosses Gills Creek was largely floodplain before we started filling and developing, and obviously, there's quite a bit of development there now. Water has a way of remembering where it's been, and it tries to go there again, and I think that's probably an explanation for why that area suffered so much during the flood. Recall that people died in that area. Ideally, floodwaters would be allowed to spread out across the floodplain as needed. And when our floodplains are protected and restored, if possible, they absorb excess water, releasing it slowly. It's the difference between water pouring out of a faucet and squeezing water out of a sponge. When you protect floodplains, downstream damage is reduced, both life and property. Taxpayer expenditures for everything from flood insurance to infrastructure repair are also reduced. Your role is to protect individual property rights, of course, but it is also to protect the rights of all taxpayers. Brevard, North Carolina, requires developers to certify that their plans won't make flooding worse for other property owners. That seems like an interesting and useful model to consider. Charlotte, as well as many other jurisdictions across the country, is beginning to work toward undevelopment of floodplains. That, too. That, too, seems worth considering. Columbia expressed a vision that would partially allow for this in its commercial node study, and now has the opportunity to begin working toward making that vision a reality. The first step in that direction is to vote no on the C3 zoning you're being asked to approve, and to take some time to consider the long-term implications as well as the opportunities that having this vacant piece of property gives you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. German. Eric Goff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Eric Goff, and I am the executive director of Gills Creek Watershed Association, and I'm reading a prepared statement from our association tonight as well. "We, at Gills Creek Watershed Association, encourage city council to consider the environmental impacts of the development on this property. We feel not only has the city disregarded its previous plans to support green space and natural stormwater filtering in this area, but it also has not thoroughly assessed the damage to water quality and creek health that this development can cause. Likewise, we note that trying to retrofit a greenway through a developed property that will be inundated with traffic is both unsafe and unwise. Moving forward, we at Gills Creek Watershed Association would also like to encourage the council to reconsider city floodplain development ordinances, as they greatly affect many environmentally sensitive areas in our city. Building in floodplains not only has a direct effect on the health of the areas that surround these properties, but it propagates an exponential effect downstream. We appreciate the consideration of both the council and the developer of this property, and we support the developer in trying to bring business to the city of Columbia, just not here. We ask to the city council tonight that you vote no on a confirmation of this commercial zoning." Thank you.
Thank you. Rhodes Bailey.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thanks for having me here today. I'm Rhodes Bailey. I am a lawyer here in town. I live over in the Gills Creek Watershed. I live over behind the VA in Hampton Lees. I was looking at the floodplain ordinance, and it looks like the code was drafted in 1979, so it might have been tweaked a little bit or renumbered. I couldn't tell what revisions were made in 1999. I'm looking at Howard, and I have a feeling he always has an answer to things like that. But I won't put you on the spot there right now. But so basically, we're looking at a floodplain ordinance that is anywhere from 20 to 40 years old, and I think our whole floodplain ordinance needs to be rethought. The flood of 2015 undoubtedly changed everything, so we can't be rubber-stamping new projects with this dated system, with a floodplain ordinance that I think would be considered antiquated. You know, if we don't learn from 2015 flood right now, when are we going to learn? Earlier, Mayor Benjamin, speaking on another matter, stressed the importance of doing something right over doing something fast. I think this is a complicated issue. I would ask the council to consider not approving this tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhodes. Has anyone else signed up? Anyone else who wants to speak on this in favor of it or against? All right. So, council?
Mr. Mayor, I have. I'd like to make a couple of remarks and maybe a motion. This process is not fast and whatever you call it, rubber stamping. We started this process a few months ago. When the developer and the landowner came to me and asked me where did they go and what they thought before I even answered, we set up an appointment with the Gills Creek Association. And I also have a confirmation from Valerie about the outlook or the output of that meeting, and you were there, Eric. They were pleased about the meeting. They were hopeful and excited about building the relationship, are working with the developer and the landowner. With that being said, we have come up in an agreement that they will give you access to do your path through their property. Whatever you need to do, whether it's eight foot or 10 foot, I don't think they matter, to me. I think it's important to say that the design that they have worked out with the floodplain and where the building association is going to actually reduce the amount of water, polluted water, going into creek, because it will be filtered through the grass, through the natural resources. So that being said, it's almost impossible for us to spot-zone this parcel to anything other than C3, because everything around this parcel is C3. Not only that, when they annexed the building or the property about six weeks ago, the zoning from the county into the city when they annexed the property was a general purpose or general commercial, which is a C3 in our book. So it's impossible for us to rezone or not approve the C3 zoning as requested. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion period. Mr. Rickman?
I just, I want to say a couple of things. Number one, I spent a great deal of time going through and getting the history of the property, and I think it needs to be fairly said that, you know, the purchaser of the property went through all the proper channels to buy this property. He has taken the time to go through all the process, but he also, Richland County had the opportunity to buy it when it was in Richland County. And for close to 14 months, according to the letters from the county, they made innuendos that they were going to purchase it with money. They brought it to a Blue Ribbon Committee. They had two appraisals done. They chose not to get it because they couldn't get the funding, or they say it couldn't come through federal funding, but they also didn't take the opportunity to purchase it with penny sales tax money, which is part of what's funding the greenway in that section. So we're sitting here today where someone has gone through the legal process. Members of Gills Creek were on the Blue Ribbon Committee, so this isn't a rushed or new process. The owner of the property waited almost 14 months to give the county an opportunity. Those appraisals, for whatever reason, weren't FEMA maybe turned them down. They didn't feel like they wanted to use the funding in that sense, but they've gone through the process. You know, when this property was under contract with another group, it was going to be a restaurant, and everybody was excited about it, and the greenway was still going to have I'm not sure that we can say that this has been a sped-up process. This process has been going on for a long time, and the owner of the property has done everything properly, invested a lot of money from engineering and everything, and from what I can tell by the correspondence I've received from everybody, was able to meet with everybody. And I think Valerie, the email you sent back, you look forward to working with them on getting the path. I've got the email, so, I mean, I'm just repeating what you sent. You know, at the end of the day, not everybody wants a car wash there, I get it. But the reality is, the owner of the property and the business that have invested have done everything correct today. And if the county and the penny sales tax wanted to get that property, they had the ample opportunity, 14 months, to do it. They had the appraisal, so like us, if we bought a piece of property, we have to get appraisals. So, you know, I appreciate everybody's thought, but I don't think it's very, how should I put it, truthful to say that this has been a rushed process. And, you know, I think we should move forward and support the development as it is and continue to work to make sure the connectivity from Croson Road on through, and look at what is the better way to do that. I know that staff has had different sections, but I think we, you know, we need to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a big supporter of Gills Creek Association and have worked with them on many projects through the last five or six years, even before I got on council. I agree with my colleagues. Number one, I think that we cannot change the zoning from C3. It came from the county as C3. There's only C3 in that area, and I don't think that it's in our best interest to change the zoning from C3. This process has been going on for a number of months. The investor in this project has investment-backed expectations, which means that if we change the zoning now or deny him something that he has expected from the regulations of the government, we would be in legal jeopardy. I think that we're too far down the path on this particular project to back up, and I would support the motion.
Ms. Divine.
First, I just want to say thank you guys so much for being here and for your communication. I've gotten some calls, and Valerie and I have shared some emails. And then I want to thank the developers as well, because as I understand from talking with my colleagues, there have been some agreements and concessions to make sure that we can have a greenway. I'm a big proponent of greenways. I am excited about the opportunities that we have in that area, not just through this property, but the entire way and to connect us to downtown. And I do think that, you know, had we, or had the county maybe made some different choices, we would be in a different position at this point. But unfortunately, based on what I've read and heard and talked with legal counsel about, I think that we're in a position that we can't really deny the developers their plan to move forward at this time. I do think that we need to continue to make sure that the development complements the area and that we move forward with making sure that there is access to the greenway and connection. And I do understand, I think from staff, that there are some plans already submitted that might draw that in there. So I just wanted to say, I think this is, in talking with Valerie, I initially had hoped that maybe we could work something out that would make the Gills Creek Association, as well as the developer, happy. I know that necessarily there are different options that people want us to consider, but based on what we've talked about today, I don't think we have those options really available to us at this time. And so at this time, I am going to be supporting the rezoning, but I really hope to continue to work with the developer to make sure that it is a positive development and the connectivity. And I think that, based on what I've heard and read, I think it will be. So I just thank everybody for being here and hope that we can continue to work together to make sure that it's the best development for everybody concerned.
Mr. McDowell.
Mr. McDowell. Yeah, thank you. I must, and I'll entertain your non-debatable motion in a second, Mr. McDowell. I must admit that I'm highly conflicted with this issue, knowing Mr. Paget and for years and respecting him, and finally having someone willing to do something with this property at the very same time. I believe, actually, Mr. Davis and I stood on that site in October 2015 and saw the incredible damage having inflicted there. And then for the subsequent years, obviously, we all, anyone in this community, saw this vibrant corridor, dealing with the long-term effects of climate change and poor planning over the last 100 years, and hoping that whatever eventual use there would be for the good for posterity, and obviously, green space being one of that. This is another example of the county failing to act and lending it our lap, and that's what it is. I did want to make a couple of points. I have had a chance to review the governor's floodwater commission recommendations, and I'm curious and hopeful that we'll see some action out of their efforts that will affect the state appropriations. I'm not sure if they've appropriated any funds yet to that effort. Maybe they will this legislative session. I know there's a strategy to try and attract federal dollars, as we all do. It's important to note, and I think it was commented that we've struggled and or failed to act, and this council unanimously has approved almost $100 million to deal with flooding issues, the top 20 flooding areas in this city appropriated, not only appropriated it, but also moved forward last year with the country, not our cities, the country's first green bond certified, green by the Climate Bond Initiative, standalone stormwater bond, the very first. And so I don't want anyone, I don't want anyone to take from this that there's not action happening here. As much as we disagree, we were able to agree unanimously on that effort, and we'll continue to move in that vein. I think even in days like today where it felt like we were in the middle of a significant storm, we're seeing the benefits of some projects that have already been deployed, and we'll continue to see that. But I wanted to make sure that was on the record. But this is a very difficult one for me, so I wanted to put all that on the record. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank you, Jimmy Nuzzus for being here, Mr. Fuller, and his motion.
Previous question.
Yes, sir. Oh, Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Boudoura?
Aye.
Ms. Divine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
The mayor's going to vote no. All right. It's going to be reserved, yeah. And this is not an indictment of Jim and the work he's trying to do, but I just think, again, we're through the comment period. I'm voting no. All right. Thank you.
What was the vote? No. What was your vote?
I thought it was no, Mr. Duval. Yes.
I thought she combined 30 and 40.
They're both presented together, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we will also have two items that are connected, 41 and 42. This is a future land use map confirmation amendment and a map amendment at 5640 Old Forest Drive. Future land use map to modify the land use classification from Fort Jackson to urban edge activity regional center, and to rezone the parcel from single-family residential in the Fort Jackson buffer to general commercial district in the Fort Jackson buffer. Obviously, this used to belong to the fort.
All right. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item? Seeing as their motion, is there a second?
Second.
With the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Boudoura?
Aye.
Ms. Divine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
We have for you a major amendment to the PUD at multiple parcels on Garner's Ferry Road, Pineview Drive, Hay Meadow Lane, and multiple other addresses. It's a request for a major amendment to the PUD in the flood-protective area to permit multifamily residential in the designated commercial area, not increasing the density of the multifamily.
Public hearing. Mr. Fuller, you representing this one as well? Are you speaking or no? Is anyone here to speak in favor or against? Mr. Markham?
Wow, this is a lot more intimidating than a planning commission meeting. I'll start off with that. I am speaking in favor of today to go ahead and move forward with this, but I just wanted to bring something up that, maybe out of my ignorance of the process, I'm just misunderstanding. First off, Alan's been great to work with. I'm representing the Burnside Farms neighborhood. We've got a couple neighbors here tonight. We've all been trying to take a great interest in our neighborhood's development, in this side of town as well. And Mo organized some meetings for us with Judd of MJS, who's our HOA management company, and Alan, who's great to work with and really transparent, so that's been really encouraging for the neighborhood. What was apparent to me, and this may just be due to my ignorance of the process, I sell sugar water to kids, so I'm not really a big development individual, but there seemed to be a period of time where there was at least a change in direction, or not to use too strong a term, but substantial noncompliance to what was in the PUD for this property, and not having anything to reflect on the leadership at the helm of this development, because I think we've got some really good people involved. But simply as a precedent for potential other developments, it came off to us as though, from the time the ground was broken, infrastructure homes went up in 2014, 2015. I might have the years wrong there. There were no clusterings of homes stated in the PUD. There were, you know, no major parks. There was just a design concept change. We all purchased homes, to be clear. We're happy with the neighborhood. We've got wonderful neighbors. I totally get the fact that there was a small event that happened in 2008 that changes things for people who have invested, you know, millions of dollars in infrastructure, and it's absolutely reasonable to change the scope of a project. That being said, on the part of the city of Columbia, it seemed like there might have been a disconnect for there to be four to five years of a substantial change to the scope of a project without a major amendment like this being suggested. Just to clarify the documents that are at large for potential residents to go and see and just verify and see what their neighborhood will be like. So, again, speaking in favor of, I think it's an absolutely reasonable thing to ask to be able to provide a different opportunity for the spaces, but I just wanted to make that point in case there's additional oversight that... point in case there's additional oversight that needs to be taken in large developments with things like the Edge looking to come just south of the library downtown, large-scale developments that are much bigger than just a housing development on Garner's Ferry, just to make sure that we made that point in trying to help build future developments to be seen correctly by the city, so.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Thank you. Anyone else who are speaking in favor of or against this? Seeing none is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, let me just add a couple more sentences to Matt's comments. It is a great pleasure to work with Matt and the Neighbor Association and developers on this, because they took the time to reach out to the neighbors and talk to them and do whatever they can to make sure that there is a communication and there is a way that they can work together. And for Matt, we applaud you for that, for the developer and Johnson and the, and so I appreciate all the time to do. And with that being said, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Next is a request for a map amendment, a rezoning at 409 and 411 Graymont Avenue. This is a request to rezone the parcel from general residential district, that's RG2, to office and institutional.
See, Mr. Andrew Imbo signed maybe to speak on this one. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Mr. Imbo, you good? You don't have to speak.
You don't have to.
Are you a proponent?
He's for it, yeah. He's the applicant.
All right. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, no one's here to speak.
Anybody else?
No one else? Okay.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. So you could have talked yourself out of it. You didn't want to do that.
He wasn't going to.
All right, good deal. Aye. All right?
Next is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment at 1.42 acres on Joiner Road, multiple addresses there on Joiner Road and Deloche. It's a request to annex, assign a land use classification of urban ed residential small lot and a zoning of single-family residential. I will point this one out to you. You have what is a mixed recommendation. It is in a primary area from your urban service area, so for a policy, we would generally recommend it, but however, there are significant service concerns, and Public Works Director and Engineering Director can speak to those. Oh, I know.
Good evening. It's a little odd that we speak for or against something, but staff, public works staff, engineering staff, has actually went out and looked at Joiner Road. Joiner Road was paved as part of the penny sales tax program. It was recently a dirt road. So we have some concerns about how the road was actually built and what the subbase of the road is for potential later on problems. What we would like to see is the road actually cored, so we can see what the base of the road is made out of, so we don't have any foreseen problems in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have been involved over there quite a bit, because in the beginning, we had some flooding issues that were moving over into the RG1 area. And the developers over there worked really hard, but one of the things that we discovered is, is that was a penny sales tax road and was not even done to the specs at the county level, and the county has not done anything to remediate yet. And so, I think Robert's approach of trying to get some core samples and then petitioning the penny sales to, you know, do this correctly. It was a dirt road for years. Stormwater was being dumped off. No DOT right of way, just an empty stormwater drain that poured into the property for years, and which caused some of the flooding. So I think we do need to do a little bit more due diligence, and we need to get with the penny sales team, because I do think it needs to be redone to the specs, not only for us, but for the taxpayers who paid for it the first time.
All right. Is there a recommendation we defer or act, or are you guys supposed to be on the record?
I would recommend we defer until we can get that resolved.
All right. Does that require action to defer? I mean, I'm not sure there's anything unique about being in a zoning public hearing vis a vis. All right.
I would just not take first reading tonight. We'll hold your first reading.
So, until.
Is there a recommendation we defer or act, or are you guys supposed to be on the record? I would recommend we defer until we can get that resolved.
All right. Does that require action to defer? I mean, I'm not sure there's anything unique about being in a zoning public hearing vis a vis. All right.
I would just not take first reading tonight. We'll hold your first reading.
So, until.
So what's your suggestion? Do we give it first reading and try to resolve before second? Or?
Well, but based on. Well, I was gonna say, because based on the core samples, we may not want to annex, so why not just hold it till we get our samples back?
That's smart. That's smart.
Really?
Have we heard from, have we heard from the penny team?
We actually asked the county engineer for the core samples, and he said, we don't have any core samples, but you can assume it's the 642. And I was like, no, you can put your eyes on it and say that's not really the case.
Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be beneficial, maybe, if Ms. Wilson drafted a letter with Ms. Higgins' help, requesting that, you know, that they look into it, because obviously, we're not, we're not getting a response, or they're not engaged. But I don't think it's, either way, the taxpayers of Columbia paid for that, so I think we have every right to know.
Madam City Manager, I'll see if we can get some clarity. In the meantime, I'll take Mr. Rickaman's motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Annexation comprehensive map amendment and zoning map amendment at 113, 117, and 121 McLeod Road.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Seeing none is there a motion?
Moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
47 and 48 are united here. It's a future land use map confirmation and a zoning map confirmation at 118 Wood Creek Drive, confirm the urban edge residential small lot for the land use, and PUDR for the zoning.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against number 47? Seeing none is there a motion?
Motion for 47 and 48.
Yes.
47 and 48, okay. It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any moved and second? Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Thank you.
49 and 50 can also be combined. It's a map use, it's a future land use map confirmation amendment and a zoning map amendment at 4.91 acres on Wood Creek Farms Road.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against 49 or 50? Seeing none is there a motion?
Moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there probably any second? Any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
And that concludes your zoning public hearing.
Let him know we're finished.
Second reading.
Ms. Wilson, move forward. 51?
51, or sorry, 52, ordinance number 2019097, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, B6 Benay Jorge LLC in Richland County.
I'm sorry, where are you, 52, right?
Yes.
All right. Is, now this is still a public hearing, right?
No.
Well, I apologize.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
This is 52.
52.
52.
Second. Discussion. Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Item 54.
You're trying to go out in style, aren't you? You were trying to go out in style. Okay. Room got cold all of a sudden.
Tried to trick you, man. Just keep you on your feet.
Madam Clerk, please.
Item 54.
I could do like you. Wow, Mo. All right. Little surprises.
Ordinance number 2019094, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of sale, deed, and any other documents necessary to consummate the transfer of .61 acres of 1201 Summit Parkway in Richland County, known as the former.
Ms. Devine, second. Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
55, annexation interim comprehensive plan map amendment and interim zoning map amendment for 7347.
A motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. Ms. Jenkins.
Appointments before council are the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Design Development Review Commission, and Parks and Recreation Foundation.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold on DDRC tonight, item 57. BPAC, what do we have tonight for BPAC?
We have six appointees, six appointments available, which would put the board at capacity.
And I know Mr. Davis had at least one recommendation. So we're gonna get those. Are we got some nominations?
No, sir. We have Marty White.
Marty White, yeah.
Oh, okay, so he was for BPAC, not CPAC. Okay. So I guess Marty White is for.
Marty White was CPAC.
CPAC, yes, sir.
And, um, there's one, I wanted to submit one for BPAC.
Okay.
Is, who we have? Who we have tonight, or prospectively? Okay. Recommendations from BPAC. Do we have any additional recommendations? They made a few that we.
I know. We spoke with John Ando, like you all mentioned, and he said he was open to being on BPAC, but he wanted to make sure there'd be continuation for the CPAC project.
Food policy.
For the food policy.
I think we probably, we need to take into account a number of the recommendations made today by BPAC. I mean, just obviously, all the discussions we're having around mobility and micro-mobility and everything else, there needs to be someone, maybe almost a comet-designated slot on BPAC. And that's a way in which, I mean, John, John adds value. I wouldn't want to preclude him. He's helping us with mobility issues around food policy. If there's a way to have a comet-designee on the BPAC, we should do that as well. That actually might be my motion, that we add a slot for a comet-designee as well. Mr. Davis, anyone else?
Wait just a while. We can do the BPAC recommendation for me tonight.
Okay.
Who's that, Ms. Davis?
They wanted to reduce from 17 to 11 also.
And we're already at 11, right?
Where are they now?
They're at 11 right now, with the four that we appointed last time. I went back over it.
That was not a definite decision.
It was something they mentioned.
It was just a consideration.
That's consideration.
Because at the time, they were having issues, meeting quorum.
Yeah. All right, so.
Betsy Newman.
Betsy Newman, a comet-designee, and Ms. Devine.
Well, I just put it out there for just consideration out of the applicants that we currently have. John Corbett, that's a District 3, but 11th, 13th LLC Sports Marketing, so I think sports marketing might be a skill set that we might be interested in. Aaron Curtis from District 1, Soda City Operations Director, just considering, you know, the volume of folks who come down on the weekend and trying to keep that mobility. And then, Rachel Thomason works for Dennis Court. We haven't seen Rachel in a while, but we used to work with her years ago when Dennis did a whole bunch with the city, and I think she's great. So I, out of the applicants, I've not spoken to any of these about BPAC, but, you know, I don't want us to keep kicking it down the road. And out of the applicants, I think these three are very impressive.
And the way to deal with quorum issues is obviously to engage folks a whole lot more and have them showing up, not cut the size of the board. Move the nominations of Betsy Newman, John Corbett, Aaron Curtis, Rachel Thomason, and a slot for a comet-designee. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Previous question, Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Bedura.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. We're gonna hold DDRC, Parks and Rec Foundation.
Yes. You have four appointees that you can appoint for Parks and Rec Foundation, and there's no restrictions.
All right.
Mr. Monk was here earlier. Is there's recommendations?
So there were actually about two or three new applications. One of the new applications was a recommendation, and the other two came from that advertisement.
Advertisement.
How many vacancies, well, not vacancies, but how many slots are?
So there are four, because it's currently filled by three members that have unexpired terms right now, so you have the potential to fill four Parks and Recreation slots.
They're still in the process of reorganizing, so.
They are. To my knowledge, Henry and Fred Monk have been working together closely to kind of help with that whole process, help them with restructuring.
Four slots?
Four.
Four, okay.
I'd like to come back with one.
I, Armando Greer was interested in volunteering for that board on the parks.
Say it again?
Armando Greer.
He was one of the people that applied.
I'll make a motion to approve him.
This is Armando Harris.
Armando Harris.
I think that's the same. And that's only Armando that we received.
Amadeo.
Amadeo, I'm sorry. Amadeo Greer.
Yes. He applied.
He applied, yeah. Amadeo Greer.
I don't see that.
It says Armando Harris here.
It's not the same one, because this person, Armando Greer, is the guy who ran for city council.
Amadeo.
Amadeo Jerry.
Jerry. Is it Jerry or Greer?
I don't see an application.
It's Jerry.
No application in here.
You know him? He doesn't have an application in here.
Okay.
Did he apply?
I have a motion out of applicants.
There's no application.
Okay. I thought he filled it in.
Let's carry it over.
Couple of slots. Ms. Devine?
I have one. I would move the appointment of Jerry Salmon.
Second.
The, where did we go? Henry, and what were the, there were some other recommendations from, they have the opportunity, if I remember, to appoint some self-perpetuating slots as well, right? The board itself can fill some of their slots, right?
Three that are fulfilling their final year obligation, and you have four to appoint tonight, that'll give you your seven.
But they have some they fill as well, as a board.
They can, that's correct.
Bylaws.
Fred mentioned that tonight, I think that something, there's a meeting tomorrow or something, so I think they're moving forward with that.
I nominate Claire Morris.
Does that satisfy the number, Henry?
As long as we get four appointed tonight, that will satisfy the number.
How, I think the opportunity, I mean, Mr. Davis, you want to hold a slot?
Yes.
All right, hold a slot, we'll go with those two for now, I mean, and if not, then I'm comfortable moving forward with almost every other one of the applicants, I know Mr. Shank, Mr. Snellgrove would be an asset, Dory Kim as well, but we'll hold off on the other two, we'll move forward the nominations of Ms. Morris and Ms. Salmon, moved and I believe second, if not, our second. Move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, Madam City Manager.
Other matters, item fifty-nine, council is asked to approve the two-thousand-and-nineteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG application for drug analysis laboratory improvement phase two, as requested by the Columbia Police Department, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item sixty, council is asked to approve a certificate of convenience and necessity as requested by the Business License Division, award to Mr. Brandon Burleson, doing business as San Marcos Tours Charter.
A motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, love to hear more about that one, it sounds interesting, okay. All right, any madams, we had one item at work session, I believe?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council is asked to endorse the Food Equity Subcommittee aspirational goals from the Food Policy Committee.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item sixty. Council is asked to approve a certificate of convenience and necessity as requested by the Business License Division, award to Mr. Brandon Burleson, doing business as San Marcos Tours Charter.
A motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Bedura?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Annexation comprehensive map amendment and zoning map amendment at one-thirteen, one-seventeen, and one-two-one McLeod Road, requesting...
Bless solstice, happy Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Kwanzaa, and a blessed Epiphany.
Amen.
Very, very quickly, first, I want to thank Mr. Davis, he has completed an entire decade with me, so, that's a good thing. Thank you, Mayor Benjamin, thank you to the city council, we've also completed twenty years of outreach, the folder that you have in front of you, the very first sheet, if you noticed the name on the certificate, Mr. Steyer actually came and visited Pacific Park to hear about the program, so that was something for the young men, he actually came there, so I was very pleased about that. And then the other outreach programs are Howard University, you'll see some of the documents that were written, the Department of Juvenile Justice we've completed, and also with the Solicitor's Office under Solicitor Gibson, so I thank, 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 we couldn't have done it without you and without the city of Columbia. And Mayor Benjamin, I have a gift for you, in this box is a drive that has twenty years, remember, I'm an archivist.[1571.83]